Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the City of Moreno Valley. Today is March 3rd and it's about 5:30 PM. Our first business spotlight, and our only business spotlight actually, is the UPS Store. So I'm gonna come down and get the certificate. Okay, thank you. Located at 21720 Eucalyptus Avenue, the UPS Store is a family-owned and operated franchise location. Owner Renee Smith is a modern-day superwoman. Not only is she the new owner of the store, but she is a proud single parent that has worked hard to provide a future for her children and family. Renee has worked as a nurse for years and continues to do so, so she really understands the importance of customer service. The UPS Store offers all the inks such as packing supplies, laminating, freight shipping, international shipping, binding, copying. She also provides mailboxes that are accessible 24/7. Her goal is that customers leave her establishment happy with the service they received. Today we recognize the UPS Store with this business spotlight video. Please roll the video.
Everyone knows your Moreno Valley UPS Store is a great place for shipping your packages, but we offer so much more ink like freight shipping, international shipping, packing supplies, copying, sign printing, document shredding, faxing, trusted notarizing, live scanning, taking and printing passport photos, and mailbox ink. The UPS Store, every ink for small business, and of course, shipping.
Very nicely done, yes. Thank you. Representing the business tonight is the owner, Renee Smith. Would you please join us at the mic, or join me at the mic? Thank you so much.
Hi.
And what is his name?
Camden.
So Camden is joining us at the mic as well. So on behalf of the city, I just want to present you with a certificate and a USB that you can use for social media, your website, Facebook, and all that other social media. So you can have a copy of it, and you saw what a wonderful job our staff did. Yes. So here's a certificate on behalf of the mayor, the city council, and the residents of Moreno Valley. Just want to say welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate it so much.
Do you want to say some words?
Thank you all. I'm really shy about being up here, so I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate it so much.
Thank you. And would you like to shake hands with the rest?
This next presentation, okay, we had to kind of keep it hush-hush a little bit. This one goes for someone that has dedicated five years of service to our city. This is a person that is a great, great person. Michael Lee is our city manager, and so I'd like for him to come up here to receive this award. Has my fingerprints a little bit on it, but we'll get them cleaned. But you know, Mike is someone, you know, that came to us about five years ago, and he started off in economic development. And right away, you know, he hit the ground running, you know. He worked as an assistant city manager in the past. He's worked in multiple cities. He's worked economic development, community development, and in the beginning he had actually community development and economic development, so two departments. And then he went to be the economic development director, and now he's our city manager. And he has just done a lot for us. In fact, we've brought over 20,000 new jobs to our city in just the last six years, and a lot of it has to do with our economic development department. Of course, a lot of people play into it as well, but I, again, just want to say, you know, we are so, so happy to have you here. And, you know, he's a very honorable, honorable man, and I know that you're gonna be great for us. So would you like to say a few words?
This is a big surprise, and Pat, I'm gonna get you back for this one. But it's been a really a privilege in the past five years under the leadership of the mayor and city council. I look forward to continue to work with you as your city manager. I think this is the best city in Southern California, and I think we're very fortunate to have the leadership that we have right now, and also a fantastic executive team, as well as the, you know, members of our city staff, really working towards a common goal to making the city better. So once again, thank you very much, and I'm quite honored to receive this from you. Thank you. All right.
Let's give our city manager another round of applause. I just want to add that when I, on the community meeting with business leaders, that they always have accolades and kudos to our city manager for moving the city forward at the rapid speed that it's gone and it's grown. And I know that a lot of our residents appreciate you because of the jobs that you've, you know, brought to the city. Thank you so much. That concludes our special presentations. The regular council meeting will reconvene at 6 o'clock PM. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the city council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees, Moreno Valley Public Financing Authority. The city council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings and now call this meeting to order on March 3rd, 2020, at 6:00 PM. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Frank Wright. Please remain standing for the invocation which will be given by Father Mark Kotlarchik from St. Patrick Catholic Church here in Moreno Valley.
In forward, Mark Christian, Air Force pilot, spent four years in Hanoi Hotel, was caught sewing a flag on his chest and beaten, but survived. Let's honor him and their flags by our presentation in saying, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God with liberty and justice for all."
Dearest God, our Creator, Jesus, our Redeemer, and Holy Spirit, the Sanctifier, we gather today to be about the business of our local city council for our city of Moreno Valley. We strive as citizens of the city to improve our local community. We ask for your blessing of wisdom for the council members, presenters, observers, and all those involved in the city council meeting this evening. May you, Lord, always be the constant source of help for our city council and our citizens. Lord, these days we experience many divisions in our countries and in our own country. This is a time to be unified and supportive of each other. We ask you, Almighty God, to open our hearts to the richness that our world, our country, and our city have to offer. Lord, may all live in peace. Lord, we pray for our young people. May they experience good, positive, constructive examples through the adults who impact their lives. May they connect with their parents, grandparents, stepparents, foster parents, teachers, coaches, clergy, and youth leaders for a strong and happy life. Lord, we pray for our young adults. Many of our young community members are college students, members of the military, employees in various places. They are striving to better themselves and their futures. One day they may be spouses, parents, and productive members of our society. Lord, we pray for our disabled citizens. Our disabled brothers and sisters want to be welcomed, recognized, and included. May their disabilities not cause alienation, but join us together with other citizens in the activities of our community. Lord, we pray for the senior citizens of our community. Their experience and wisdom is of great help for our society. They have lived for many years and experienced many things. They contribute to the richness of our lives. Our seniors know many things and can help us today to better understand ourselves. Finally, Lord, we pray that the ethnic, religious, and economic diversity of Moreno Valley will continue to contribute to the upbuilding of our city. Moreno Valley continues to grow in population. May Moreno Valley continue to experience prosperity, not only economically, but in mind, spirit, and generosity. We ask you, Lord, who lead all people, to move us forward, to be a greater community each day. Amen.
Thank you so much, Father. And this is Father Mark from St. Patrick Catholic Church. Thank you. God bless. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Thornton.
Present.
Councilmember Marquez.
Here.
Councilmember Caballera.
Here.
Mayor Protembaka.
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez.
Here. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Jacquez Nares, City Clerk.
Renee Bryant, Management Assistant.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Cosanowitz, City Attorney.
Mike Lee, interim city manager.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Man Yamontz, Community Development Director.
Captain John Salisbury, I function as Chief of Police.
Abdul Ahmed, Fire Chief.
Patty Solano, Parks and Community Services Director.
Okay, just a reminder, we do have Spanish translation services in the back if anyone needs them. Before we hear public comments this evening, I just ask and encourage everyone to keep their comments respectful towards each other, especially towards the individuals at the podium. I embrace and support the First Amendment right to free speech, including everyone's right to speak at this meeting. Finally, I ask that speakers bear in mind that comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, depending on how many speakers we have. Public comments on matters on the agenda will be taken up as the item is called for business between staff's report and city council deliberation. Those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda may do so now, and those wishing to speak should complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the bailiff. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, council and staff will not respond during public comments. Any council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during the council closing comments. So Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
We have two for non-agenda items and one for agenda items.
Okay, just for non. Okay, let's go ahead and call those two.
Marisa Salas and Robert Thun.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Marisa Salas, and I'm a social work student at Cal State San Bernardino. Our class has been tasked with creating a project in the inland empire, and our group chose Moreno Valley to look for something to come alongside and support the community. So we spent two days surveying citizens of the city to ask what it was they felt that the community was lacking or was doing well, and I'd like to commend the city manager because the one thing that was overwhelmingly positive was how much the city had grown and the food services that were available, and so that was a really neat thing to hear that you've been doing well. But an overwhelming response of people also talked about school safety being their major concern. And we were initially surprised by this response, not really knowing the community, but then became aware of the incident that happened last September, so it kind of made a little sense to us. But in looking to respond to their concern, we then followed it by reaching out to the local schools to see how we could come alongside them and be helpful in a project to implement a stronger school safety program or what it was that they were doing. Our team called several of the schools and found that we were easily dismissed or put off, or phone calls were not returned. And we understand that that is not your job, but we just wanted to share what our experience was and to let you know that this was something that was going on. Thankfully, the school board has responded, and we will be meeting with them, but we know that as public servants, you are wanting to promote a positive vibe for your community, and so we just wanted to share what our experience has been. Additionally, we just wanted to let you know that in deciding to do something on our own, because we weren't getting much help initially from the school board, or I'm sorry, from the school system, because the school board has responded since, that we decided initially to create a pamphlet of resources because parents were not aware of the programs that the school board has implemented or the school system has, and we found all sorts of things that your city has been doing to get the public involved. But there still seems to be a big disconnect between parents and having access to resource. So like I said, initially, we wanted to do a pamphlet, but we in turn decided to do a business card that has a QR code of resources that are available, and so we just wanted to invite you to share any resources that you may have with us or to maybe implement something like that that's a little easier for residents to access, because most people don't have complete internet service, but most people do have a cellphone that can access information through a business-sized QR code capability.
Great. Thank you so much, Marisa. And if you could maybe leave your contact information with our city clerk right over here, and then we can have that information. Okay, so thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, next speaker is Robert Thun, followed by Rafael Brugeras.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members. I am Robert Thun, resident of Moreno Valley, and I'm sure it's no surprise to you that I am not as enthusiastic as you are about the construction of a large warehouse on the east end of town. I also do not share in the belief that the merits of this planned warehouse development will outweigh the negative impacts this project will have on our environment, our quality of life, and the health of our residents. We are in the midst of a global climate crisis, and the air we breathe has been determined to be unhealthy. Yet we support this project that is projected to generate an additional 14,000 truck trips a day. Vehicle exhaust is the largest contributor to U.S. greenhouse gas emissions, driving climate change. It has been estimated that this single project will release more than 385,000 metric tons of greenhouse gases into our atmosphere every year, 40 times what the South Coast Air Quality Management District considers as significant. Diesel exhaust is responsible for 70% of the cancer risk from airborne toxics. Breathing unhealthy air has long-term consequences for all residents, but especially for children whose lung capacity can be reduced and their risk of lung cancer increased. Children breathing unhealthy air could be a ticking time bomb five, 10, 20, or more years into the future. I believe it is environmentally irresponsible and morally indefensible for the city council to continue to support this disastrous and unneeded project. It has been five years since the 2015 city council vote allowing this project to move forward. The world has changed since 2015. The economy is strong, employment numbers have risen. To quote Mayor Gutierrez in an article published this past November, "Moreno Valley's economic transformation over the past few years has been nothing short of astonishing." I believe that this project needs to be looked at. It is time that you make things right by no longer funding and using city resources to support this project and the 2015 city council vote that approved it. Stop the litigation supporting this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker, Rafael.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, residents. Mayor, I want to say thank you for allowing Mike Lee to receive the reward tonight, because I seen Mike Lee grow. I've been sitting back there for years, and I have watched him grow, and I've been supporting development, and I've seen this city grow because of allowing them to do their job freely as professionals. Each and one of them that sit next to him do their job for the city of Moreno Valley, and this is why the city, as he quote, "doing well," it's because of your agenda, your thinking for the people of the city of Moreno Valley. Those are the things that we see in the agenda. The staff gives the report, the council makes a vote. When the vote is right, the city grows. When the vote is wrong, it stays still. This city is not willing to stay still any longer. So I thank you for allowing, once again, Mike Lee to get that award, because it shows how we are growing with this staff's leadership and your leadership and the council's leadership. And that's why things like that was reported in November, like the man said, of a good report, and we want more of those in the city of Moreno Valley. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Rafael. Next speaker, Tom Gerald.
Thank you, Mayor Gutierrez. Tom Gerald, speaking on behalf of myself and a little bit for the Sundance Center. I spend a bit of time, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, members of staff, and the public, both in the chambers and watching at home or on the Internet. First of all, I want to congratulate Mike Lee for his award, and I think that's well-deserved. I like to see when well-deserved kudos come along. And on that related matter, I always never shy about plugging our hands-on people. Couple weeks ago, there was a very big graffiti monster went on the side of a wall on Sunny Meat Boulevard, just a couple doors down from us, and I called it in in the morning, and it was raining. It was a day it was gonna rain, and they got out there and got it done before the rain. So that was very, very impressive. It mattered probably three hours or less. It was a big graffiti, it was really ugly, so, and I let them know that. I called it in, but I didn't expect to see it for a couple of days because of the weather. So I really appreciate that service. Public Works, great picker-uppers and things on the street, and just yesterday we saw we were at the corner of Ironwood and Indian. I thought it was a picture frame, but it was a broken mirror. Some dummy left it, and it was big, there were all kinds of plate glass all over the sidewalk, and it was probably about 3:30 before I got to call it in. And later we went by in the evening, all gone, all cleaned up. So I really appreciate the Public Works, seeing that. And I just picture some kids, you know, kids are, they got their hands on everything, grabbing that and getting cut. So I really appreciate those hands-on things. Bob, the last meeting, mentioned about the mayor being a four-year term. I strongly support that. I think it's something we should look at, and it has nothing to do with Mayor Gutierrez, it's just something that, continuity of leadership, it's very, very important. I felt that way about when we put it in, and I think it's something we should take a look at that in the future, because, you know, it'll take a year to do a campaign, and so you've got half your term spent politicking, and, you know, we get better service, so I hope that's something we can do in the future. Subject of warehousing and trucking, you know, the demand is here anyhow. If we don't do something on our turf, the vehicles will be going through our area and, you know, stopping somewhere else, and they'll be polluting the air just as much. Another thing, too, I'm a big believer in technology. I'm surprised that we don't have electric trucks making a short run, meaning from the port to the inland area where they make a stop, because they can easily do that with today's technology. They don't need anything too super-specific. So I'm very hopeful for the future, technology will benefit us. And then finally, as soon as I leave here, I'm gonna run over and do my honor to vote, and what a privilege it is to live in a country that's free, and despite all the shenanigans might go on during the campaigns, it's an honor to be able to vote and elect our officials. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna go to consent calendar here. And these are considered to be routine and non-controversial, sections eight through E. All right, anybody have a question on any of these? Okay, seeing none. Any public comments? You said there was two? There were two, or one?
Rafael Brugeras.
Okay, he waved it. He waved it. Okay. All right, thank you, Rafael. I entertain a motion by council to approve the consent calendar. Okay, moved by Councilmember Marquez, seconded by Councilmember Dr. Thornton. Please vote. Okay, and it's approved. The motion carries. All right, we're gonna go straight to general business, and this is a F1 fiscal year 2019-20 mid-year budget review and approval of the fiscal year 2019-20 mid-year budget amendments. Okay, Marshall?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members. The item this evening is an update on the city's budget. It provides the mid-year update, which is July 1st through December 30th, or the first six months of the fiscal year. With regard to this item, what we're looking at primarily on the general fund is what we'll focus on, but through council's direction of maintaining a balanced general fund budget, we've continued to do that typically through the first six months of the fiscal year. Revenues don't always follow a straight trend line, meaning that we don't really expect to see 50% of the revenues in the first half, and that's really due to the fact that our property tax revenues come in in January and April. So at this point or through December 31st, we really expect to see about 29% of our revenues received in the general fund. At that point in time, we were at 31%, so pretty much right in line with what we expected from the revenue projections. With regards to the general fund expenditures, at 50% of the year, we really expect to see about 50% of our expenditures in that area, and at that point, we were actually at 42%. So that was really in pace with some of the expectations that we have for the general fund. So overall, through the mid-year process, the general fund has been right in line with the budget projections that we had at the initial adoption back in May 2019. As we go through the mid-year budget, one of the things we always look at as well is the budget was adopted, and we tried to strategically reinvest every dollar at council's direction so that we continue to maintain infrastructure and other components in the city. So as we see adjustments in revenues come in, we look at those revenue adjustments and additional expenditures. So as part of the mid-year budget, we're proposing that the general fund revenue budget of approximately $115 million be increased by $208,736, which would put it at approximately $115.2 million. Most of this is related to the activity that we're seeing in building permit fee revenue. So we're offsetting or accounting for that revenue at this point in time. On the expenditure side, though, we do have a direct offsetting expenditures, an equivalent increase on the expenditure side of the $208,000. Some of this is tied into increased software maintenance costs. We also have some components where, as we're addressing issues with homeless, other cleanups or nuisance abatements in the community, we're reinvesting that money right away and back into the community where we've seen some of the recent needs. So this has provided council the opportunity to reinvest where we need to do it as the dollars are made available. Aside from that, the general fund continues to be structurally balanced without the use of fund balance for these operations. When we look outside the general fund, some of the major areas that we look at are gas tax. That's when we're looking at really the money that goes into a lot of our maintenance for streets. We do have an adjustment here based on additional projections from the League of California Cities. We're looking to increase that revenue at $271,000, and then we'll look at Public Works to integrate that into their future projections or planning for street improvements or other items. With regards to the Moreno Valley Utility Electric Fund, we have seen an increase in some of the renewable energy costs, and so as we've purchased those energy sources to meet the demands for the first six months, we do have an increased budget here of about $693,000. So that will be offset with additional MVU revenues, and as we look at rate adjustments in the future, if that's necessary. Some of this was just short-term market demands that impacted the pricing within that purchase. The final thing is Technology Asset Fund. We're looking at a reduction of $150,000 on expenses. That'll go back into the replacement funds for TS, and some of this is related to accounting procedures where we're adjusting depreciation expenses. Aside from those items, that kind of hits the main components we're looking at. There are a couple position adjustments. There are a couple of position adjustments. And what we typically bring to the city councils when we're looking at operations to kind of adjust positions to be more efficient and effective in what they're doing. And meeting some of the needs, we're able to do this or present adjustments to the council. But really, we, we come forward with items that do not require an increase in the budget or an increase in the position control. That's allowed us to be very efficient in our staffing and meet those needs as they continue to evolve. So there are a couple of items there within the staff report. But aside from that, that completes my report and I'm available for questions.
Okay, any questions? We have, okay, question from Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you Mayor. Marshall, you were talking about a hopeless and, and cost. Are we receiving any money from county?
I mean, most of the money from the county, well, let me take a step back. The city of Moreno Valley is an entitlement city, so we do receive funds, our emergency solutions grant directly from the federal government. We program that through the annual grant process. A lot of that has been used for different programs. With regards to funds that go to the county, usually they're handled directly through the county or through the continuum of care. And then those are allocated out to other sub recipients. Typically, those funds end up going into nonprofit agencies directly or through county programs as they're applied within our area.
Okay. Because I was told that we should be receiving some of those funds from some of my colleagues from Sacramento. So I don't think, we are receiving, we aren't receiving money. So, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, any, seeing, no more. Whoops, there you go. Any public comments, Madam Clerk?
None.
Okay, any deliberations? Seeing none. Okay, I entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations, numbers one through four. Okay, motion by Councilmember Cabrera, second by Councilmember Marquez. Okay, and then the second part is for the CSD. So I entertain a motion by the CSD to approve staff recommendation number one.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Mayor Potembaca, second by Councilmember Cabrera. That motion carries as well. I entertain a motion by the HA Housing Authority to approve staff's recommendation number one.
Mr. Marquez, can I have your vote please? Your vote on the CSD. Thank you.
Okay, that motion carries. And then entertain a motion by the Housing Authority to approve staff's recommendation number one. It moved for, by Councilmember Marquez. Second by Councilmember Cabrera. Okay, please vote. Okay, and that motion carries as well. I entertain a motion by the successor agency to approve staff's recommendation number one. Moved by Councilmember Cabrera, second by Councilmember Thornton. Okay, please vote. Okay, and that motion carries. And that is our mid-year budget review and approval of the fiscal year. Along with the mid-year budget amendments. Okay, city positions and all that stuff, so. All right, reports, council reports. We'll have Mayor Potembaca, if you could just do your two.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thanks.
The first one is for the March Joint Powers Authority. Tonight, I'm providing an update on the commission retreat held on February 26th. It was a very interesting meeting. And, and at that meeting, the commission directed the JPA staff to develop a step-by-step roadmap for sunsetting the JPA at some unidentified future time. So that's for March JPA. And for WRCOG, the WRCOG staff highlighted outreach efforts to encourage full participation in the upcoming census. The city of Moreno Valley hosted a successful census, education, and job recruitment event in conjunction with other agencies at the Conference and Recreation Center on February the 14th. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And then we also have two reports by Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you Mayor. First one will be RCHA, Board Directors Meeting on February 20th. The city has collected a total of 18,444 fees that go from July 1st through the end of December. These funds are provided to the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency for conservation purposes. Second report is from the RCA Board Directors on July, on March 2nd. Moreno Valley collected fees of 80,216, and those are for the residential permits. And what that shows is we still have homes being built in Moreno Valley compared to other community, local communities. Some of them don't even have anything going on in their city. So they, they don't have no fees. But it seems like Moreno Valley is always there with 80,000, 100,000. So it shows that we are building and hopefully affordable housing. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Councilmember Marquez. City Managers Report?
Thank you Mayor. I just want to introduce Manny Mancha. He will be serving as your new community development director. We're quite excited to have him onboard as part of the E Team. And we're looking forward to some great things for Manny. That concludes the City Manager's Report tonight.
Thank you and welcome Manny. Can you wave your hand just to the public? Okay, there, he's right there. Okay. Thank you. All right, well, welcome. City Attorney's Report?
Nothing tonight, thank you Mayor.
And then, all right, Councilmember Thornton?
Thank you Mayor. Last week, I was able to participate in the Think Together Tour. We went to Hidden Springs, Sugar Hill, and Cloverdale. I want to thank Patty and Mike for accompanying me on that tour. It was really great to learn more about the program. We are, we, it's a partnership with that nonprofit. And we serve over 4,000 students. It's within 43 elementary and middle schools in Moreno Valley Unified School District. And what it does is provide programming for children from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, which we know is the, the most riskiest time of the day. So it was really great to participate in that tour and to learn more about that very important program. I will be having some upcoming town halls on March 8th, 15th, and the 20th. So please either look at your next door or go on my Facebook page to find out the location. The General Plan Public Workshop for District Two will be held March 18th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Canyon Springs High School. And also, we'll be having a citywide one, March 14th, here at City Hall from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. I want to also, on Friday, I will be going on a tour of Donkeyland, which I'm very excited about. To learn more about their program in the, in the boroughs. So super, Representative Supervisor Hewitt's office will be joining me and someone also from Riverside Sheriff's. And so we can talk to the leaders up there about their issues, their challenges, and some of their successes within that program and how we is, we can partner with them as a city. Also, just want to give a plug for the upcoming airshow that will be at March, on March 28th and 29th. We know it brings a lot of traffic and a lot of people to the city. So please be conscious of that. So that'll be March 28th and 29th at March Air Reserve Base. Please come. It's a very dynamic show. The Thunderbirds will be there and many other great aerial displays. Thank you so much Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dr. Thornton. We'll have now Councilmember Marquez.
Yeah, thank you Mayor. We were, someone, I believe it was Robert, talking about electric trucks. They're coming. They're coming. I'll tell you why. Because RTA is mandated from the federal government to have all-electric buses within the next 10 years and on. So we had a presentation at our last RTA meeting, last week. And we had a representative from up north talking about electric vehicles. And yes, semi-trucks are coming. Probably in the next 15 years, we'll have them. It was also brought up about the short distance on electric trucks. Because when you operate a vehicle, electric vehicle, it can only run so fast and so far for a period of time before that battery goes dead. So they're working on that. But they put the wagon before the horses. And when they were coming out with this design for electric buses. So hopefully, they'll take care of that problem. Last week, we had a little incident out in District Three. There was a traffic accident, hit a power pole. I'm a little concerned of our communication between Fire Department, Police Department, and City of Moreno Valley. There was an accident occurred approximately 3:30 that afternoon. PD responded. Fire Department responded. They were called off by PD saying that they didn't need them. PD left the scene. Would you believe it? There was 52 residents that didn't have power. At 6:30, I got a call from residents saying, "We have no power. We've had not had power in the last three hours." I contacted our Assistant City Manager and he got on it right away. Edison was never notified. So once we got hold of our people, they notified Edison. And we got on it right away. Took us another three hours to get electricity out there. Excuse me, but we, we got it. The thing about it is, we need to communicate more between all our agencies, police, fire, and the city. My concern was, could have been residents out there in those homes that needed the power because of their health. Maybe a breathing machine, maybe some type of medical machine. But for that to happen and nobody was notified, or nobody did anything of follow-up, that's very concerning. So I know my staff, our staff got on it right away. And I want to say thank you to Ellen, Mike, and Marshall for your getting on it right away and getting some power out there. RCA, they have a new website going up. And it should be up already. With this new website, what they want to do is, they want to inform the public on what their mission is for the county. And that's, all that land you see in those hills is owned by the county. And they do that for, for certain reasons, to purchase that land, to preserve it. But they also want to do a new program, work with the schools. And they want to give scholarships to these local schools to let the students know and learn why those fields are, are open like that, wide open. So you'll be hearing from the RCA and myself within the next couple of weeks about scholarships be offered to schools for students to take field trips out there to learn what the whole purpose of RCA is. So that's something, that's something that's coming up pretty good. General Plan Meeting, March 11th, Senior Center. Come on out District Three or anybody who wants to come out. And we'll go with a general plan in our, in District Three. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We also have Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you Mayor. Yeah, first, just want to talk a little bit about voting. You know, today are the primary elections here in California, actually in many states across the country. So just want to encourage anyone, if you're watching right now, or if you watch this before the polling locations close, you know, please go out, exercise your democratic tools and, you know, shape the future of our country because it's vitally important. Hopefully, sometime in the near future, we have a much friendlier federal government that will collaborate with the state and the city of Moreno Valley even more. For things like electric vehicles, for example. Tom, thank you for bringing that up. You know, I'm a, I'm a big believer in that. We've seen that technology just continue to advance dramatically over the past several years. And I was just thinking back to the different tax incentives that were in place under the previous administration in conjunction with the state incentivizing more electric vehicles to be purchased by consumers and to be put out into the market. And hopefully, moving forward, we can bring those kinds of programs back to keep putting electric vehicles out there, decrease our greenhouse emissions, and at the same time, create more jobs by installing the grid, electric vehicle charging stations, solar panels, et cetera, et cetera. So just want to make sure everyone goes out and votes. Also, this Saturday, we have the 5K race across the base, starting at, I believe it's about 6:30. So if you go out to our social media pages or our website, you can register there. You'll see me there, you'll see Parks and Rec. I'm sure some of our staff and my colleagues will be there as well. I think we have several hundred people who are registered for that. I don't know the exact number, Patty, maybe you can mention.
Thank you, Councilmember. We are approaching 200 registered participants. And it usually climbs the week before and the day of.
Yeah, nice. So about 200, we're expecting more. I'll be out there running as much as I can, hopefully. My heart and my lungs keep up, but, but I'll be out there on Saturday. Also, road repairs, once again, just want to give a shout out to staff and Public Works, Michael Wolfe. I know it's been taking a little bit longer to wrap up this final cycle of road repairs because of the weather and the rain and the cold and all of that. But it looks like we're finally wrapping up this cycle. It looks really good. And I'm looking forward to the next cycle later this year. Also, Golden Corral recently opened. I still haven't been. I've heard it's really good. And so anyone out there who's a foodie like me, I highly recommend you go out, check out Golden Corral. I've been to them before, but I'll be visiting the one here pretty soon. And with that, you know, comes new jobs, more opportunities. And moving forward, like has been mentioned, we want to keep, keep this momentum going of creating more opportunities, upward mobility, increasing educational attainment, increasing wages and all of that. So, you know, we've, I think collectively, done a really good job of that and hope to keep that going. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is our, Mayor Potembaca, do you have any comments?
Very few. I just want to say that it's almost 7 o'clock for those watching live. I know that once we repeat this, this video will be too late. But you have a little bit over an hour to go out and vote. Please vote. Make your voice count and help us with the leadership that our, our schools, our state, and our country needs. I, of course, am not going to tell you how to vote, but please do so. And remember that the census is coming. It is very, very important for you to be counted. So we'll be having more information that we'll be sharing with you regarding the census. And I just want to say, be a good citizen and participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potembaca. Same thing here is, you know, make sure to go out and vote. It's about an hour left, I think. So it's really, really important to exercise your voice. And, you know, as, a couple of things, actually, I know that it's on a lot of people's minds, the coronavirus. I know that it's affected a lot of people in our nation, in our state. And obviously, there's been some people that have passed away. And so I really want to look at, you know, what I'm hearing right now from several employees or different groups in some of our distribution centers is that unfortunately, it's having an economic impact too. In the sense that some of these companies are reducing the workforce. So some of them are only working two days out of the week, or three days out of the week. So I'd like for, for us, at least the Economic Development Department, to research this a little bit and see what's going on. And see if there's anything that we can do to maybe, you know, I know we can't, you know, give them money, you know, the company. But, you know, something we can do to talk to them because it is going to have an effect on families. You know, there was a gentleman that told me just the other day that, you know, he's only working two days out of the week, you know, at his distribution center. And he used to work five days. But this passed last week because it's gotten really, really bad. The employer decided just to go down to two days and that several of them are doing that. So that's a major concern for me because I think, you know, as Mayor, you know, we, we want everybody to, you know, you know, feel, you know, great about their job and going to work. And that's really important. And then the economic impact to our city too is really important. The second thing is, I want to make sure that as Mayor, that we're prepared to. You know, I think it's really important, you know, we've heard from CDC, you know, that you should have, you know, at least, you know, two weeks, you know, of, of supplies. But I want to make sure that we, at least our emergency prepared center office, has reviewed our, you know, our protocols and that we're ready for it. So I want to make sure as a city that we're ready for it. And really the strategy that we have for it. So that way, when it does, if something does really bad happen, you know, we're prepared to help the public. Okay? So without further ado, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting and make sure to go out and vote at 6:40 PM. Thank you.